We'll answer questions.
We're ready when you guys.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I'd like to call the order, the Monday, August 21st meeting of the City of Manona City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder DePula.
Here.
Alder Homquist.
Here.
Alder Moore.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Radamacher.
Here.
I do not see Alder Bernstein, Mayor O'Connor.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
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 Opposed. Minutes are approved. There are no appearances. Sean is here to answer questions if need be on the North Point project, so he can just stay here and enclose. Is that okay, or?
Well, he should not be in.
He should not be enclosed.
He can be in certainly when we come back and.
Okay.
Consider it.
All right.
I can give a couple of quick updates about the project if that's okay.
Sure, if you'd like to do that. Sure, if you want to come up here, that's fine.
I can also just go on the hallway, too.
Okay.
Whatever works. Good evening, everybody.
He is here instead of his daughter's hockey game, so I figured we ought to at least.
Oh, yeah.
It's summer league, though.
They have to keep you extra long.
Yeah, yeah. It is, it's summer league, so it's not a big deal, so. Well, I want to just reintroduce myself, Sean O'Brien from North Point Development. It's been a really long journey. I think we started in, what, September of 2021? It sounds like when we first brought our GDP through. I just wanted to just say, you know, to, you know, the community, CDA, really appreciate everything that's been done over the last couple of weeks and months to keep everything moving forward, you know, even with, you know, doing the reeds and having a special CDA meeting. It really helps keep our project on target. Really excited, I mean, again, it's been a long time coming for this site. You know, the site does have some significant challenges. We're going to have to, you know, put in some geopiers and remove a lot of historic fill and take it to landfill, you know, all which put some additional challenges onto the project. But the goal is to, you know, really, you know, pending on the outcome of tonight, try to push forward to start construction in the next couple of weeks. And once we get a little bit underway, would love to have everybody out for a nice ceremonial groundbreaking. We are going to build 75 units for our project. We're asking the city to participate as a partner in the project for $890,000. I think it's a really good investment. I think that we'll be able to repay the city on their investment within six to seven years. And, you know, obviously, the benefits will last much longer than that for the community and also for the site. I mean, a lot of times when I worked at WIDA, I really got to see how tax credit projects could be catalysts for communities. If you break it down even to something smaller like this site that's, you know, been idle and, you know, the RV campers on it, you know, for a really long time and other uses before that, you know, with this project moving forward, the road's going to go in and then there will be other, you know, sites that are out there that can be developed in the near future as well. So we're really excited about it. We are, I am here to answer any questions and just appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think maybe if you could stick around till after a closed session, I don't anticipate it will be too long.
Okay.
In case we have questions on, does that make sense? Unless anyone has anything right now they'd like to ask? Okay.
Are you going to a closed session now?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is no public hearing, there is no consent agenda under council action items under unfinished business 1A, convening closed session under Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, front one, front E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. This relates to 1208 East Broadway. We have two different agreements here, the White Horse and the North Point Development agreements. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll move, so I'll move to go in closed session. Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Homquist.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Radamacher.
Aye.
Alder DePula.
Aye.
Is, okay. Sorry to say who's the person. Doug, do you want to? Are we good? Okay.
Rated, if not owned, real estate developer in town, and in fact, a good number, in fact, Doug, here's a task for you. A good number of, it occurs to me that a good number of the individuals that have come forward in front of the plan commission over the last two or three years have also been minority-owned or leased here in Manona, and it would be great to get a, in terms of our DEIB initiatives. I think this development obviously takes a great step forward and it's exciting new development, and I certainly concur with Sean's comments that this is apt to spur other development in that area, so.
Anyone else?
I think North Point first logging through with the city and all other parties.
And I know Patrick and I, having spent the past year on the county's affordable housing committee, appreciate seeing this finally get to the starting point, which is great. Anyone else?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, then will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Radamacher.
Aye.
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder DePula.
Aye.
Alder Homquist.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, and congratulations, Sean. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item E, consideration of resolution 23-7-2637, approving a facility use agreement with Manona Grove Youth Football. This is put forth by the Parker Recreation Board. Is there a motion to approve this?
Moved to approve. Second.
Neil, were you going to address this? Jake is on vacation this week.
I think, just very, from what I call from the previous reading, this was simply kind of updating the terms to allow for the private individuals to institute some fundraising to, for some bleachers and some other types of things. I believe this was largely based on our standard format, unless Mr. Paul has any other additions on that, I think staff's recommendation is approval.
Yeah, the only significant change is the change to the term. It is a 15-year term on this agreement now as opposed to annual, but as I mentioned last meeting, we, the city, not the other party, but the city has the right to terminate at any time for any reason upon 30 days' notice. So it really doesn't change anything for us.
Anyone have any questions to answer?
Yeah, I'm still a little bit confused as to, I mean, I certainly understand the reasoning behind extending it beyond a year because we don't need to be improving this every year, but as was discussed at the last meeting, doing a full 15 years is very unique if not, if it doesn't exist somewhere else in the city with any group, so I'm just kind of wondering why we're choosing this particular park and this particular group to go a full 15 years.
I think it has to do with the fundraising they're hoping to do to build sort of capital improvements in there for their facility, and they just want to know that they're going to get some long-term use out of those improvements.
I wonder if it's based on, like, the lifespan of a child athlete. You know, like, when you have, you have parents who have, like, little kids in elementary school, they're going to, like, put money in, they're going to see it all the way through high school, they're going to use those facilities. I, I don't know. The number of walls is also confusing to me, too, like, the difference between one and 15 is a huge number, right? When you go with five or 10.
And Alder, I think certainly staff would share the concern if we didn't have the, basically, the escape clause, so since we could pretty much get out any year, there was an issue. Really, the final term really didn't matter too much, I think, so.
And I think they are planning on doing some pretty extensive, you know, extensive fundraising. They're talking bleachers and that kind of thing, and so I can understand why they'd want to have some assurance that they'd have access to them. So, any other questions? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Radamacher.
Aye.
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder DePula.
Aye.
Alder Homquist.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item F, consideration of ordinance 8-23-769, creating section 335-20 of the Code of Ordinances, restricting pedestrian activity in street right-of-ways, put forth by the Public Safety Committee. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion approved.
Doug, did you want to?
Yeah, I was going to move my amendment, I guess, so, which is really, yeah, so I'll move the amendment that's included in the packet.
Do I need to withdraw my motion, Ben?
No.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll vote on it as amended later.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Doug, did you want to address this a little bit, or?
Sure, I can, so, yeah, after the last meeting and really even before that, I guess going back to when we rejected the original agreement back in February, because I felt, and I think others did, that it was way too broad, but I also, at least I felt like there were safety issues that needed to be addressed. And so what this does is prohibits any pedestrians from being in the median for any purpose except if they're at a median crosswalk for the purpose of crossing the street. That's the same as was in the original proposal. And then it would also prohibit pedestrians from approaching vehicles in operation anywhere along Broadway, South Town Drive, you know, Manona Drive and Stoughton Road, the thinking being those are the most, by far, the busiest streets in the city, and there's no parking on those streets, so there's really no place for a driver who wanted to interact with someone to get out of traffic. And then the third, the third thing, it would also prohibit pedestrians from approaching vehicles in operation on the side streets within 250, within 200 feet of any traffic signalized intersection. As I say, we have, there's 16 of those in this city. My thinking there is, again, if someone is approaching the traffic signal, you want them to be focused on that, there's really not any opportunities to pull over and stop at that point. You know, the traffic light turns green, the traffic coming from behind is going to expect you to move, and, you know, it just creates confusion, potential for accidents between vehicles or vehicles and pedestrians. And then the fourth part of it would basically make those same, it would also prohibit drivers from stopping to interact with pedestrians, so.
Any questions for Doug? Nancy?
Well, I'm not sure if it's the questions for Doug per se, but I guess I'm wondering if it makes sense to be this specific on an ordinance? Like, it's, it, I mean, it means that every time we create a median or decide to put up a stoplight, we have to go back through and change an ordinance because it will be out of whack. I mean, it just seems to me if we were to, and this.
No, scroll ahead, it eliminates the, it eliminates the naming of any road. It goes to the definition.
Well, there are some.
No, it doesn't. It says along Broadway, South Town, Boulevard, Manona Drive and Stoughton Road, so you're naming roads.
For, for, those are just the material roads, which are. Right. Those are the only material roads that we have. So the, if I could, the median, the part prohibiting someone from being in a median, that applies to all medians, so if we create new medians, it would apply there as well.
And it would apply if it's a median in the middle of South Town or at the exit to South Town or Huska, as an example.
Right, yeah.
As well as?
Yeah, I mean, it would apply, if there's a small, I guess it's a median where there's a crosswalk on Bridge Road, but that's all there is to it, I mean, it's basically the crosswalks. But, so, yeah, that, the specific references is where prohibiting pedestrians from approaching vehicles to interact with them on those streets, because there's nowhere for traffic to stop to get out of, to get out of traffic to interact with them.
Anyone else? Brian?
I would point out, although I think that I completely agree with it, this is actually more restrictive than the previous version. If we just look at square footage of like, I actually like this because it's by definition, and I think it is capturing what the intent was of the group, which is to look at a safety measure and to look at what are the, what are the situations in which this is of concern of pedestrian and vehicle interaction and address that issue and not try to name every little specific space, so I think this does a wonderful job. But when we look at distance and scope, it actually applies in a greater way, but I think it's more appropriately done, and I, you know, I appreciate Doug, the detail, but also the definition-driven approach versus trying to, like, draw it on a map to Nancy, to your point of, like, we'll be back here every time there's some type of road construction redesign, and this does a nice job of really putting together the variables that exist that are dangerous, and I think it does a nice job.
Thanks, yeah. I mean, I was attempting to narrow it down to the streets where it really, intersections where it's potentially a safety issue or is a safety issue. And the original ordinance, it had, you know, inland way and Royal Avenue and, I don't know, some, I guess, for the entire, for the entire length of some of those streets that didn't make sense to me, so.
And if we decide it's an issue, we can always revise it later, right? I mean, if something.
Right, yeah, sure.
Rick?
I wanted to ask, Doug, how does this address some of your earlier concerns when you were already against it? Seems like before we didn't want to criminalize, or this seems to do the same thing as before?
Well, I think it's, I mean, I guess part of it is, you know, I've had six or seven months to think about it and to become aware of some of the specific problems that exist, you know, with people laying down in the median. Now, my, one of my concerns at the time, like I said tonight, was that it was too broad and included a bunch of streets that were didn't, for the entire length of streets, where it didn't make any sense because there were places to stop. If you saw somebody and you wanted to talk to them, you could stop and interact. So I think Brian's right, if you measure it out, it might cover more footage, more things, you know, there's a lot of intersections with traffic signals. But it, and what I was trying to do is not make it, make it apply anywhere where it wasn't needed, where there wasn't a safety issue.
Right.
But people who can't afford it are still going to get tickets?
If they violate ordinance, yeah, well, they might, I mean, they would be subject to citation, yes.
I imagine there would be sort of an implementation phase.
I'm sure Chief Duman, Assistant Chief Duman is here and could address that. Sarah, did you have something, would you like to say it?
Sure. So the plan for the police department would be to have at least a two-week period to implement warnings and public safety announcements to address the updated ordinance, and then as is usually our practice, first-time offenders will still get a warning, even if it's not within that first two-week period.
And Sarah, you, quite often the officers offer assistance, right? Information about assistance through the county and other venues at that time as well?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, any shelters that we have available in the Madison area, as well as, they have a cooling and heating shelter, depending on the season, that's also available to people that the officers provide information on.
Anyone else? I have a.
Just to address Alder Bernstein's concern, too, in addition to the police, you know, talking to the people and making sure they understand it, if citations were issued, those get prosecuted by me, and as, you know, Chief Duman and many of you know, I mean, we have a pre-trial conference with the person. It is a very fact-specific type of pre-trial conference, and I'm pretty clear with offenders that the city is not interested generally in obtaining money from people. The city is interested in obtaining compliance, and if it were somebody that were, the behavior is based on, you know, physical need and displacement, there would not be a hammer coming down on that person, to the extent I can say that, you know what I mean? This city has made clear to me as the prosecutor that we are to deal with people compassionately, and we sincerely try to do that.
Nancy?
Yeah, I would just, I mean, I have to say that I, like I think all of us, or most of us, I still really struggle with this because precisely, for all the reasons that others have talked about and I've talked about as well, and I do think, as Alder DePula said the last time, if other people in Manona are uncomfortable with it, are uncomfortable seeing folks on the median, perhaps that discomfort is a good thing because they need to see that people need assistance. That being said, I, you know, I support the amendment under the understanding that, first of all, that people are welcome to be anywhere but the median, and, you know, including on the sidewalks, including on right-of-ways, you know, and that the city bends over backwards to not get into a monetary situation with someone because the data is exceptionally clear on a national level as well as on a local level that fines are totally ineffective and go completely against all of those initiatives that we're trying to take as it relates to DEIB. You know, if you're, if you're poor and homeless to begin with, you don't, if you have $50, it's a slippery slope of a pile of fines that ultimately our $50 fine could end up putting somebody in jail for, so.
Ours can. Bill, can you comment on our civil forfeiture, and if it does escalate to criminal?
Yeah, rarely would it escalate to a criminal offense, that all the citations here would be an allegation of a, or violation of a municipal ordinance. That's prosecuted through municipal court, our municipal judge, Judge Finley, would preside over it. He has no authority to jail anybody, I don't have any authority to do that.
I'm not saying we would jail anybody, that's all what I said. I said that a combination of what we might do and whatever other fines and violations that person might have could trigger, I'm concerned that it could trigger somebody, not our, not our work in solo.
That has happened in, obviously, other communities where it's kind of well-known. The only response I would have to that would be, these forfeitures, when they're unpaid, they're docketed as judgments, and as Elder Moore said, they can accumulate, but it's a judgment of the city. So nobody would, we would never enforce that or attempt to collect on it without, the council could at any time say, you know what, $30,000 is accrued, we want that wiped, it's the council's prerogative as to whether or not any enforcement action would be taken to collect that money.
Patrick?
I'm going to support, I'm absolutely going to support Doug's amendment, I just am adamant about not criminalizing poverty, and I think Nancy mentioned that, too, it's, it's a thing. I mean, we are privileged to live in Manona, we are privileged to go about our daily business and not be affected by things that we are uncomfortable with, but the simple fact that we are uncomfortable with it is cause for concern, and we should think about how we address these things. And granted, there are plenty of services available in Dane County, we have those services available, and there's a certain percentage of folks that refuse to accept those services, whether there's drugs involved, whether there's other things involved, and they don't want to comply with those programs. And I believe that with this amendment, we are addressing the safety issue primarily, and I think that's a good thing, but we are not criminalizing poverty. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have.
Teresa?
Thank you, Alder DePula, for this very thoughtful comment, and also just the thoughtfulness of all my colleagues on the council, it's just very clear that this is something, as Alder Wood said, we've had, you know, six months to think about it because it just wasn't an easy decision. And I was on the Public Safety Committee when this first came about, and it was the longest meeting we ever had because there was so much conversation and concern about this. You know, as the mother of a relatively new driver and, you know, having my eyes open to all the new drivers that there are in our community, it is, I appreciate the distraction that someone approaching a vehicle can cause. In the time that we first started talking about this, I've had my eyes opened a little bit as well, I was originally very much against it, and, but just last week, it happened again, a woman approached the vehicle ahead of me, walking right into the street, and there were a number of cars that had to stop at a very busy and dangerous intersection, and it was causing a bit of a safety issue, I felt. So it's, as Alder Homquist said, I also, I really appreciate that there's more of a attempt to explain the purpose that we're after rather than make it geographical and just to say here and here, it's not allowed. I do have, though, a question, sort of a geography question. Alder Moore, there's a point, letter D, in your amended language, your proposal, letter D, where it talks about the person being within the first 200 feet of an intersection, and I'm just curious how that 200 feet came about? Is there anything that you were thinking that would sort of?
Lawyers hate to admit this, but I actually basically copied that from the Madison ordinance.
Okay, okay.
And it does make kind of sense, that's.
Yeah, okay. I'm just curious, like, trying to think, what's 200 feet, like, the distance from this wall to that wall is what, 30 feet? So that's a very long.
Two-thirds of a football field.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, that's a very big, you know, footprint that a person would not be allowed to be inside, but then again, if you're talking about the intersection of Stoughton Road and Broadway.
You're going fast.
That's huge.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's a very big, but on Manona Drive, if I were over at, you know, the Walgreens on, you know, Nichols and Manona, that kind of wipes out the whole area, I mean, I mean, it restricts the entire area, person, people really couldn't even be on the sidewalk, correct?
Oh, no, you can be on the sidewalk, sure, yeah.
And maybe I'm misunderstanding.
You can't approach. That's the key piece to this, is that it's not just being there and, you know, holding up a sign or even, you know, just being, it's, they have to also approach the vehicle.
Okay.
Like you were saying, that you observe, that, that kind of thing. I guess, you know, if 200 feet, you think is, the council thinks is too long, it's?
I'm not sure, I mean. I'm not sure. I mean.
I would just point out, it's about, for a vehicle going thirty miles an hour, that's five seconds.
Right.
So, yeah.
I, maybe I just don't understand the language as it's written. Or, so, am I, is the point here that if I were to be there approaching vehicles, or if that was my intent, was to approach in a vehicle, that I could not be close, I mean, I could not, I guess, if you could just explain, what is the two hundred feet, what is it?
So it's two hundred feet measured, it's actually measured from the center line of the intersecting highway. So it's really, in terms of how far, you know, when you're driving up, how far you, like, from the stop bar, we have, it's gonna be, you know, more like a hundred and fifty feet from there, depending on the width of the highway. But this would apply, so on the four main streets, Broadway, South Town, Manona Drive, Stoughton Road, but also for the intersections would apply, let's see, yes, on the side streets that, for example, Dean, Frazier, Nichols. So it would extend two hundred feet down those streets as well as being on the main thoroughfare.
So it is more than just being in the median. It is.
Oh, yeah, right.
You cannot be within two hundred feet of the stoplight.
You can't be within two hundred feet.
Engage in a car.
You can't attempt, you can't approach a vehicle.
You can't, you can't approach a vehicle if the vehicle is within two hundred feet of a stoplight, one of, on one of these roads.
Yeah.
And the point is, as the vehicle's driving toward the stoplight, they should be paying attention to the stoplight, whether you're two hundred feet from the stop, as they're, yeah, I mean, yeah, okay.
That other driver is behind them, you know, you expect when the light turns green, that person in front of you is gonna keep going. And if they stop, then, you know, generally wanna avoid violating other drivers' expectations.
Correct.
As a general principle.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that.
Anyone else? Nancy?
I have to say I'm a little confused on this too. Because I'm unclear as to how this works if it's by federal law, legal to panhandle. So if we're saying.
It does not have anything to do with panhandling. It's anybody, I mean, that's why, at least the way I drafted it, it's focused on, on safety. And so you could actually, if you weren't, as long as you're not obstructing the sidewalk, you could stand on the sidewalk with a sign, as we see many of those. But you can't approach the vehicle at these particular places while they're in the process of approaching an intersection that has traffic signals.
It's about safety, it's not about First Amendment. First Amendment, you can regulate time and place with First Amendment-related issues, but, but this is simply about safety. It's not about the right to panhandle.
Anyone else? Okay, there's no one else? All in favor of Alder Wood's amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Uh, me, nay.
Okay, and then we're going back to the original motion as amended? Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
I was gonna say one thing. I know the wording doesn't say panhandling, and we are really trying to get at safety, I know that. But the reason this was drafted was, was stimulated by the fact that there was a real uptick in amount of panhandling. So I know it doesn't say that specifically, but that is the issue. And it does have a safety component, I agree. But to say that it doesn't have anything with panhandling, I'd have to disagree with that.
I mean, I would disagree with that in the sense that, in the sense that if we had folks sleeping in the median in the city, we would address that even if there was no panhandling happening. So, so, I mean, yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, I agree with that too. But I think that this was stimulated by the fact that this was, there was a, just a lot of new people standing on the streets asking for money. That's what started this discussion. So to say that it doesn't have anything with panhandling, I think is kind of glossing over the fact that that's really what initiated this, this new ordinance.
Doug?
I mean, I, I agree, that is what started it. And I think some of the reaction to people seeing that was, you know, it's been suggested, especially at the previous meeting, that it made people uncomfortable to see people in that, you know, state of need. But it's also, you know, if there, if there was some way that you could magically do the safely, like, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be a concern. It's just being in these, these places or doing these, approaching vehicles at certain places is, you know, is a safety issue, whether it's, and whether they're panhandling or doing something else. But.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. It's, you know, if, if we didn't have people who were approaching vehicles asking for money while they're in traffic, then we probably wouldn't be talking about it.
And that said, if there's folks panhandling in Winnebago Park, I'm not gonna vote on any legislation to prevent that from happening, you know.
Anyone else? Brian?
I'll add that there's been equal, equal concern that have been raised over time regarding our Fill the Boot campaign. So routinely, we have had people share their concerns with our firefighters doing exactly the same thing in the median. And especially given the number of individuals and the amount of individuals that are approaching vehicles. So that is something that yearly has come forward as concerns. Sometimes maybe not as public, but there have been equal, equally as many concerns that I'm aware of, that people have had regarding the onslaught regarding our Fill the Boot campaign, as well as other types of campaigns that we have brought up regarding the same issue of, the safety issues associated with that. So I, I don't think it's, you know, it's in isolation to only additional individuals that are out asking for money in medians.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How long is that Fill the Boot campaign? How many years was that in effect?
Still in effect, I think. Well, it won't be anymore.
I think they agreed to stop doing this. But has it, was it five years, ten years or more?
Long time.
Yeah, I don't know. So it was in effect for over ten years and it didn't result in, in the draft?
Of course, it was only like two days a year, not every day also. But I get what you're saying.
I would make the point that it depends on.
Anyone else?
Although I would.
Doug?
It will apply to them too.
I know.
Right.
And so we lose out with that. So, I mean, that's an unfortunate impact, I think.
No, it's a fortunate impact that we're protecting the safety because it's equal as concerning.
All right. I think, I think that's being overly generous, but.
Well, I do think there's other places to collect money other than medians, you know, if you're asking for money.
Well.
I mean, you walk down State Street and people approach you all the time asking for money.
Right.
So I.
Okay. I guess I still feel like I'm gonna vote against it, so either that.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor of the original motion as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Item 2A, consideration of temporary Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B wine retailers licenses for Manona Eastside Business Alliance, Christine Welch, Ten Westbrook Circle, Madison, Wisconsin, 53711, for the period of September 30th, 2023, with a fencing exemption put forth by the License Review Committee. And this is in regard to the chili cook-off, I think.
Start for immediate action, no.
Yes, it's start for immediate reaction, so.
I'll move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Doug, did you want to say anything about this?
Yeah. They had originally come in and didn't, they thought they would, they didn't ask for a fencing exemption, and then came back and realized they didn't feel like they really needed it. And License Review, we talked about it. It's kind of in the trend, at least for daytime events, to not require the fencing. And PD was fine. They didn't, yeah, that was their point, was it's a daytime event. So they're not that concerned about if somebody might hand alcohol or, you know, underage people might get alcohol, so.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, item B, consideration of temporary Class B fermented malt beverage retailers license for Gigi's Playhouse, Madison, 4101 Manona Drive, Madison, Wisconsin, 53716, for the period of September 2nd, 2023, also put forth by the License Review Committee and also start for immediate approval.
I'll move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Doug?
This is, Gigi's Playhouse is the sponsor, the event is Rockin' Brew's Marathon, which has been in the city for a few years. Haven't had any issues with alcohol with them in the past, so.
I'm just curious, because I know we have had other issues with them in the past.
Yeah.
Is this to benefit Gigi's Playhouse? Is that, is it different this year?
Yeah. And, yeah, my understanding is those, the other, the parking issues and so forth are being addressed.
Anyone have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Moving on to reports of committees, commissions, boards, et cetera. First of all, we will have a staff presentation by Director of Planning and Community Development, Plowman, giving a Manona housing snapshot, which he actually presented this at Plan Commission a couple of months ago, I think now. And they asked that it be presented to council.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I know this was included in the, in the city council packet. As, as mentioned, this was a housing assessment prepared by city staff at the request of Plan Commission. He can't be here tonight, he's on vacation, but a huge shout-out goes to Assistant Planner, Fuller Jepson. He did a lot of the legwork, data crunching on this as well. So he's sorry he can't attend, but looks forward to the discussion. So really what I'm gonna do is just kind of call out a couple, a couple points running through the document, but really just wanted to open it for discussion and just have it so that, so that you're all aware. So the real intent of this document was to, to kind of provide an interim update on, on metrics, on numbers, to assist the commission whilst they're reviewing projects that are coming in, with the goal that this is moving towards, obviously, an update of the, of the comprehensive plan in 2026. So with that, there are, there was a lot of discussion in terms of the sections that would be included. So we, we went ahead here with four: demographics, housing, development, as well as sort of financials, was what I called it. Again, a lot of these, in terms of the dates and sort of the frequency and the numbers that are referenced, are referencing back such that you could actually pull open the comp plan and you'd be able to see numbers that are referenced in there. And it's sort of providing that, again, that interim update there as well. So we do jump about a little bit here in terms of the data points. You've obviously got the census data, which is a full count, taken every ten years. And you have the ACS, the American Community Survey data, which is a little more of an estimate. It gives you data at a greater frequency, but it is estimate rather than count data. So you'll see a little bit more of that volatility in the numbers there. So the decennial numbers are certainly the preference. And since this was presented in May, we actually have been able to go through and update a couple of sections that have been trickling out from the 2020 data. Still waiting on a couple more, but we'll, we'll be moving through that. So in terms of demographics, one of the things that stood out right off the bat here was the, the comp plan included a DOA estimate that the Manona population would be decreasing by three percent. Instead, it has actually increased by fourteen point five percent during that same timeframe, and that was 2010 to 2020. And that has moved the population to nearly nine thousand now. And again, that, that is count data, that is from the census. And in terms of the, the age groups, what makeup there would be of that population, you sort of see two categories standing out here. You've got kind of the thirty to thirty-nine category as well as the sixty to sixty-nine. And so, again, thinking of that from both the Plan Commission but also broader for city council, sort of the, you know, the needs and the sort of housing needs, and also services and such that those different population groups would, would need. And again, as you start to look through the document here, you'll, you'll see kind of the, the shifting age of households, families, looking at the family household number. There has been a slight decrease in the share of family households, whereas when you see a thirty to thirty-nine category, you may expect that, you know, to be increasing. So it may just talk a little bit to some of the, you may try and, you know, cross-tab a little bit there and see, look for some additional meaning within that. As far as the housing units, this is the highest ever number that the city has had, increasing over six percent since 2010. And again, that's to the 2020 numbers. One thing to note here is the smaller household sizes. Again, just looking at different tables within the document, you'll see that 1970, the decennial census then actually had the highest population. So even though we have the most housing units now, there was, there was a time in 1970 when the population was still higher. To break that down, using ACS data, so a little more of an estimate rather than the count, again, you'll see over sixty-one percent of that being single-family detached. And this is a good point to, to sort of call out that missing middle section, the sort of two to nineteen unit properties. And so of course, there's a huge range within that, but sort of the twenty-plus is pretty well represented, as well as of course, the single-family. So it sort of shows that missing, missing piece there as well. And moving on to the ownership versus rental, you'll see a decrease of about three and a half percent in the city in ownership with more rentals. And the rent-own now tracks very closely with Dane County as well.
Doug, could I just interrupt by a question? Definition, when you say a one-unit detached or a one-unit attached, what is that referring to?
So really, that would be sort of a shared wall, possibly so.
Sure, okay, the building itself is detached from any other.
Correct, yes.
Like a duplex, like a duplex.
The duplex would probably be the one that comes to mind, sort of the one on F M Ray is, is a good example. Yeah. Thank you. In terms of the, so again, tables 2.3 and 2.4 shows the numbers versus the percentage there between the two. You'll notice a little bit of the noise there between the census data and the ACS when sort of comparing directly. Age of housing stock is another interesting one to look at. Again, owing to the, the sort of development, the time of development within the city, but of course, also the landlocked status, you'll see over forty percent of Manona, the housing units in Manona, and predominantly, I would guess, the single-family detached would be built, were built between 1940 and 1959. And really, you sort of notice that thirty-year limited development span between 1980 and 2010. I would say you're seeing things picking up again since then, but that's really the, the sort of piece there. But especially as it relates to the county, there's, there's a real, this sort of, you know, really caught up and spent ahead there as well. So page four, we really saw that as a, as a good reference piece for, for the commission and to be shared wider as well. So you'll see sort of the top half of this is the development that's taking place since 2010, with the notes section sort of including a little bit of the nuance there as well, in terms of details such as for heritage and also for Fairway Glen, that there are a couple townhome units that were included in that development. And below, we have updated this as well, but there's also discussion of the units and the type that are also in sort of the entitlement process or waiting to be built. And you'll notice, of course, an old point in there that was discussed earlier this evening as well. So a lot of elements included in there, and you'll see, again, to that point about sort of newer, new units added, you sort of see the shift here. you sort of see the shift here from, from 2010, as well as what we're expecting 2020, 2023 onwards as, as well. So the final piece, just going to, to the last page, to the financials. You can see here both sort of the rental versus the, the ownership model. And first one I want to point out is, is the 2019 data, that nearly, nearly 20% of renters in Manona were severely cost burdened, which means that greater than 50% of the household income goes to housing costs. So certainly something to, to point out, and definitely, you know, multitude of reasons that you can discuss for that, but you can see sort of the, the way this is rising for both the, for the values, but also for the rents as well. And of course, the, the rental market is more volatile, and, and so you can see that sort of increases over the last 10 years. And then the, the second table, table 3.2, includes the single-family values, and most of interest here is the 2022 and 23 data. This was actually obtained from Accurate Appraisal, from the, the city's assessor. And so this, this data is just obviously what they're using, specifically. The, the 2000 and 2010 data is self-reported in the census, so there's a little bit more interpretation, you could say, there, whereas the, the appraisal data would be a lot more reliable, maybe, and a better way to benchmark that. So you can see, again, just sort of talking how that's tracking, you can see the, the increase of nearly 10% from 2022 to 2023 on the median assessed value, and almost all of that is attributable to improvements as well. So again, sort of looking a little deeper into the table, you'll see there, sort of the top four rows showing very few units, sort of the 200,000 below. And again, with, with the missing middle, there is sort of an opportunity, if you go a little, you know, sort of a medium density or something that maybe has less land attributed to it, then some of the affordability can, can come in as well. Because you can even see here from the 200 to the 300,000, between 22 and 23, quite a large drop-off there of nearly 300 units that have sort of shifted away as well. So lots to point out. Ideally, with that data, we would go back further and, and sort of look for larger trends. One year is, is a little difficult to, to extrapolate, but it was quite a big lift to get that information from, from Accurate, and when I was doing this was sort of during the appeals process, so they were a little, a little busy at that time. So we included just a few talking points, and, and this really remained from the, from the Plan Commission discussion, but really, the missing middle certainly stands out, looking at these, these pages. But also the, the age profile of both the residents, but also of the housing, the, the units that we have here in the city. Opportunities certainly to, to, to lowering construction costs, to, to assist with some of the affordability of the rents in particular, but also to offer varied housing options for, for people. And again, the, the final point, the small lot development as, as an affordability measure to help with some of the missing middle, and to, to really look maybe a little more to some of the starter homes and to helping folks move from those rental units, or possibly downsize into, to a smaller unit as well. So with that, you know, just kind of a quick run-through of, of the documentation there, certainly happy to answer any questions, but was, was really here to introduce this and open up for, for discussion.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions here, Doug? A lot of interesting information here. Alder Moore?
I don't have any questions, I just want to extend my gratitude again for, for, to you and Thor for putting this together. It's very helpful for the Plan Commission, and trust it will be for the city. And I know it was just a, you know, a big mound of data that we talked about, and what would appropriately tell the story, you know, as, as we talked about in, in meetings, you know, the snapshot, and I appreciate all the work you put into it.
Anyone else?
Just a comment as well, I think the table that really catches my attention most is 3.2. Where you think, you know, just 20 years ago, the most, you know, the vast majority of houses were between 100,000 and 150, I mean, far and away, like not even close to the others, and now 3 to 5,000, 300 to 500,000. And there's not even any, there, nothing is in even the same ballpark. You know, it's just such outliers of data, so interesting.
Mayor, can I just say one other?
Yeah, I was just going to say one other thing, is it, because it certainly relates to something that Doug said around all this too, which is, you know, if you, if our fellow Alders or, or people who might be watching this haven't seen the city's 216, 2016 comprehensive plan, one of the things that you'll see in that, as well as the strategic housing plan that was done, and the update that was done to that plan, one of the things that you'll see is that there was a real call for improvements to the houses that did exist here. Like the, the shape of the overall housing stock was really, I mean, I didn't live here, but to read those documents, it sounds like there were a lot of houses that were in a lot worse shape than we have now. Because it was a real call for things like women in Manona and other things to get, help people get their houses in better shape. So, you know, it sounds like, I mean, that was a priority in that plan. And, and obviously, still a priority for, according to this data, but, you know, I, I guess I certainly assumed that we had a lot of small houses, but I didn't think we had a lot of houses that were in really rough shape. It sounded like that was the case.
The other data point that really stood out to me, kind of gave me a little bit of pause, is just this, the bullet point directly above that, table 3.2, saying that, you know, 19%, almost 20% of our neighbors here in Manona are severely cost burdened. More than 50% of household income goes to the cost of housing. 50%?
That's 20% of renters, not neighbors.
I'm so sorry, I misread that.
There's still a lot of people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah. But our neighbors who are renters.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It's probably higher now, I would guess.
Yeah. Given how rents keep coming up. Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, Doug.
I had, I guess, just a question process. Because I know we talked about CDA, the, the need to update the housing component of the comprehensive plan. This data, I assume, will be used towards that?
Yes, so, so we sort of saw this as a, as a good, almost a, a quick overview for that, but there's certainly been discussion internally amongst staff as well, that some of the housing bills have been introduced recently, some of those elements as well, that looking at the housing element is, is probably going to be the first piece to that, and it'd be difficult to do that without opening up the rest, I, I would imagine, but is there, is there a way with that, you know, to, to, to look at this, recognizing the needs of, of housing at this point as well? So I think this gives, gives a good sense. I, I think there were, were a few things that stood out, you know, especially to me, just looking at this and comparing to the comp plan, the, the age of the population, sort of the, the housing stock, the population, and, and some of those details that I, that I think I'm not sure we're all quite aware of. And so I think that that would feed into, to the housing elements and would help inform that. But certainly, you know, we see that as, as a medium-term priority, and not, you know, planning to be waiting until 2026 to do so.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your and Thor's work on this. Next item, updates, discussion on DEI efforts. Does anyone have anything to talk about? Neil does?
Go ahead.
Teresa?
I was only going to mention that the radio show I mentioned last time around, Conectados, is live now, the third week of every month on the VMO show on WVMO. It's a bilingual program, talking about Latino culture and music and food and traditions. It also just covers what's going on in Manona and in the school district, that people would, anything that you and I would like to know about in, in both languages. And I just so appreciate the posters that are bilingual, it's just kind of fun to maybe even learn a new word when you look at a, you know, poster as you're reading it. And a lot of thanks to Shalene Sarate, the, the woman who is putting a lot of work into this, into our community media and DEIB groups that made it possible.
Neil?
Just a couple of quick updates. Was fortunate enough to take a tour of the new McKenzie Regional Workforce Center with the Boys and Girls Club of Dane County. Will definitely be trying to arrange for an opportunity for any Alders to go and see that. It's an, it's an amazing facility. And just not only from what they have in there, but really from the, the community partnerships that are involved, and the companies who've donated time and materials. It is an amazing building, it's over by the Thermo Fisher campus, folks are up on our own road. But just some amazing resources for kids. It's just a really, really great project that I think would be, I think Alders would, would appreciate the, it's a new outlook on kind of the workforce development issues we're dealing with as for in terms of economic development, and this is a very unique hands-on approach, I think, to some of the things they're doing there, so very excited about that. We are hosting the Dane County CBG Home Review Committee this week as they evaluate grant requests for 2024 funding. To my knowledge, we don't know, I don't believe there's anything that we're aware of from Manona specifically in this year's request. But staff would like to actually, has actually asked, city, county staff, that city staff to sit down and actually discuss programs to identify potential applications for the coming year. So we're going to be looking, looking to them to hopefully give us some, some clarity on their programs, and then hopefully be working to identify some opportunities to get some of that funding here in Manona. We did share with, with the chief's office, Urban League Greater Madison has a, has a free expungement clinic to assist people with their, with criminal records, to actually get them cleaned up, passed that program along to our police department. I think they'll be looking at that. We did have, we had 15 Progress Rainbow lapel pins, I actually have mine on today. It was donated to this, to, to the city, and were made available to staff, so I think several bills are all gone. To my knowledge, I think the staff has been wearing them around the office, if you notice them. Check them out. They're really, they're really great. I did share with Alder Radermacher, City Subferry has a multicultural fair on September 16th. It's like an 11 to 4 event. This is like the third or fourth year doing that event, and it's really kind of a neat celebration of a variety of cultures. So beautiful thing about public sectors, we see somebody else doing a good idea, we can steal from it early and often. I think it's maybe something we want to take a look at, in terms of other, combining with other opportunities, there may be some neat things we can do there. Talk about the median safety ordinance, obviously, tonight. We are looking into kind of a, the concept of a housing summit a little bit in terms of discussion with some local developers in terms of their process, and actually, you know, really kind of going into their process and how, what their, purely from their perspective, how their process has gone. We've got a couple developers from Madison, even a couple of our past ones here, said they'd be willing to work with us on that. Also looking at doing a, an outreach to our Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority representative, Rebecca Giroux, she's looking, probably having that meeting here still yet, here in August. So again, just kind of learning a little bit more about existing programs, and again, some of the things that Doug referred to in terms of the new ordinances and programs that we'd has, and actually kind of establishing that. We had a really great relationship, I did, in Green Bay with our area rep. And that pays huge dividends in terms of reminding us when programs come up and when deadlines are. And to have that relationship, being very active and checking faces, actually, it certainly increases our likelihood of obtaining funding, both for us and for our private sector partners if we're in regular communication with them, so that's my update.
Okay. Anyone else have anything on diversity? Anything on sustainability?
You know what, Mayor? I will say something about diversity, only because all the committee meetings, you know, people, community members can go to the YouTube station, they can watch Manona go, they can read the minutes online, but the DEIB committee has chosen not to record, so you wouldn't know this. So I'll share it with, tonight, that I think I have been sharing all along that there's been sort of three workgroups, housing, communications, and sort of, one of the, the women defined it as, you know, changing people's hearts and minds, you know, how do we go about doing that? And our last meeting was, was attended by City Administrator Stic Schulte, and it was, it was a lot. People were tasked with sort of going after, you know, the details of what actually could be done to implement some of the ideas of the plan, and just a lot of work going on there, so.
Anyone else? Thank you. And now we will move on to updates on sustainability. Okay, moving on to reports of committees, commissions, et cetera. Alder Holmquist?
I believe ZBA was canceled for the month. Good, I got confirmation. I believe CDA, we already met, so we're canceling the future one, which was tomorrow. And then there is a public safety meeting on Wednesday, if I have it correct.
Alder Moore?
We have a Plan Commission meeting on Monday. I just got sent the agenda. Oh, I've been sitting here, so I have it. I can't tell you what's on it yet, but there is a meeting on Monday. And I'm trying to think of the other committees, the Transit Commission, again, used to deliberate, and I would expect a decision and perhaps a recommendation in October.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I was just going to say, well, this is just about committees, correct?
Yeah. Do you have something else to announce?
No, I was going to just mention the San Amiano event is coming up.
Well, you can mention that.
Okay.
You won't be called on again, so.
Yeah, so for those of you that are interested, the last Beer Garden of the season in San Amiano is this Friday, August 25th, from 5 to 8:30. That Beer Garden being a joint effort of the Friends of San Amiano and Manoma's own Park and Rec. And, and it is featuring Manona's own Mark Croft Band, a crowd favorite. So hopefully the weather will cooperate, since it hasn't really much this summer. For those Beer Guards, should be a great evening. And second, for those people that might not be aware, the Celebration on the Shore, which is the Friends of San Amiano's largest fundraiser to date in support of the property and its future developments, is happening on September 8th, from 5 to 11. It includes a fabulous dinner, and provided by Salvador's Tomato Pies. And live jazz, a silent and live auction, and program about the property, and all under a Big Top tent. Should be a great night. Look to sendamiano manona.org, or the city's website, for additional information, for tickets, or to help out with a silent auction item, or learn more about the event.
Thank you. Alder Wood?
The only thing I would report is that this is the last week that the pool is open. 12:30 to 7, open swim every day this week, Sunday is the last day, so thankfully it's going to be open.
Yeah, a good week. Alder Radermacher?
I, no, no reports.
Alder Bernstein?
Just a few things. In terms of public safety, one of the things I did was to tour the fire station with Dan Eklaff. Eklaff. And they mentioned all the Alders, if you haven't been, you're more than welcome to do that. One of the things I saw, a couple of things I saw that I thought might be of interest to people here, there's an incredible map of Manona that's electrified from behind. It has all the street names with a button. You push the button, and it lights up that street, so you can find it on the map, along with highlights for all the fire hydrants. Someone made that, you know, a volunteer who's working there, and it's worth the price of admission in and of itself. He also mentioned that one of the fire engines had some damage, and it's because the fire engines have such a tough time pulling in backwards into the garage. So Dan made the pitch that he is insisting on a drive-through for the fire station, and it's because of things like that causing damage to, I think- it's because of things like that causing damage to, I think, one of the brand-new fire engines. And also, if you didn't know, I didn't, Fire Chief McMullin sleeps in the office there, and a bed that I would not be comfortable with my dog on, you know? So if there's any way we can find some money privately or otherwise to give Chief McMullin a proper place to sleep, I would heartily contribute to that. The library's still punching above its weight. The stats in terms of circulation are much higher than the median throughout the county, and if you didn't know, it's circulation that has an impact on their funding from the county, so that's good. They're planning to use some of their fund balance to augment an existing twelve-hour-a-week LTE position into a twenty-hour halftime-permanent position in youth services. So they're terribly understaffed, but this is one small way with, I think, eighty-two-hundred dollars from the fund balance. They're going to try to staff up a little bit. The library is processing its equity audit that it got through embracing equity, they paid $10,000. We're one of fifteen or more communities that sent a team of three to this program. We're all doing it at the same time, and there was a three-day retreat, so me, Ryan, and Tiffany represented the library. It was a three-day Zoom, which was somewhat difficult to kind of sit at your computer for three days, so it was tough to get through, but it was really amazing. There were programs that we all attended, but then there were breakout sessions, and I learned a lot personally from some personal stories in terms of how racism has affected people. And everybody has their own story, so I was very moved by it, and that experience will stick with me. The, one of the events coming up, Drag Storytime, September 9th, 10:00 a.m., Grand Crossing. They'll also have an exhibit in the library about We've Been Here All Along. I think it's something the Wisconsin Historical Society put together, part of their traveling exhibit series. I think the Milwaukee Housing Protest exhibit was in the library, that's also one of the Wisconsin Historical Society traveling exhibits, so look for that starting in September. Transit, I just mentioned when we met last time, we had a virtual discussion with people at First Student. I think some of us knew already that First Student has purchased Badger Bus, but it seems kind of, it'd be interesting if we go with Metro and Badger Butch is a subcontractor, we'll be working with First Student in an interesting contract, subcontract situation. And I think that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I know We've Been Here All Along is also a, I think it was produced here in Madison, a movie, or like a ninety or 120-minute film about the gay experience in Wisconsin that was on Channel 21 fairly recently, and I imagine if you have a passport, then you could see it.
Right. Yeah. Exactly.
And Rick, if you haven't toured the police department, I would recommend.
Oh, I did.
Oh, you did? Okay. Alder DePula has stepped out. Chief Duman, did you have anything to report?
I don't have anything additional.
Okay, sorry.
Eating dinner.
Sorry. Not to the right time. Mr. Plowman, do you have anything? Attorney Cole?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alene?
No report.
Somebody will have a report.
None in the room.
Okay. I just had a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to thank Alder Moore and Alder Wood for serving as acting mayor while I was on vacation, kind of covering for each other when one or the other was out of town at the same time. The, we had the first two Public Safety Building Design interviews today, went well, the other two are tomorrow, and the location for those, I know we only had, only Alder Radermacher came today, well, and Alder Monquist is on the committee, but if anyone's planning on attending a person tomorrow, we've switched the site to the library, to this room, because the air conditioning is out in the admin wing at the city hall, which is unfortunate. The only other thing is our next meeting, remember, with Labor Day being a Monday, it will be on Tuesday, September 5th instead, so. There are no appointments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Can you remind me, are the interviews for the Public Safety Building being reported?